Encourage them to switch over. We plan to kind of shut things off in our system mid-September, but as Kayden mentioned, you don't really know everything that's going to happen, so um that is kind of flexible for us because our, we've talked to our current provider and they're willing to work with us however we need to. Um, as Jill mentioned, Resident Access is actually a larger platform for a lot of different permanent services. And so one of the great things that we'll be able to offer going forward, um, and we're not, we're still working on configuring this part, but general billing, which is um, if you go as a contractor to solve waste and um, they push you on through and then we bill you later for it, um, you will get a bill for general billing and we don't currently have an online platform for them to pay. And we also don't have an IVR, which is an um, interactive voice response system where they can call and pay over the phone. Going forward, once we have that all configured, this Resident Access will give us that online portal and then we're also going to be able to offer um, an IVR for them as well. And so now to get you to the utility billing platform that I'm super excited to show you about, um, the first thing is that you'll come to from our website to the screen that you see up on um, big screen right now. And so in this area, there's two options where you can do a quick pay and with the quick pay, you'll have to put in your account number, customer ID number, and then you'll put in the dollar amount that you have owed and um, you can choose to pay the full amount owed, or if you know that you have one, uh, two bills out right now and only one of them's due, you can pay just that dollar amount.
Me, that's a quick question, right there, that's where I want to ask it. Um, is that quick pay for a landlord, is that where they could go in to see their tenants, what they owe for their water bill? If they have the number, how do, how does the landlord check to see?
So they would be able to do that if they have the full account number and customer ID number. Um, I would highly recommend that they um, speak with us and get signed up for um, the delinquent look notices. So if they are delinquent, then we just send a notice to them and to the customer. Alright, so then if you create a login, um, which you were just saying up, and if we scroll down just a little bit on the announcement side of things, we do have some information here about EZ Pay, which is where we pull the money for directly from their checking account. Um, they can't actually sign up for auto pay through this side if they're signed up for that and there's reasons for that. Um, the ACH that we pull from their account is free, so whereas if they sign up for auto pay on here, they're going to pay a fee, so so we've shut that off so that they can't do both and it causes some issues sometimes if there's a timing issue. Um, we talked about the fees that we have, we have the form there if they want to sign up for ACH, but then at the bottom, we have some site instructions. And so that was attached to all of your packets and um, it kind of outlines how to sign up, but it also goes over all of the features of the site. And we have our contact number down there. So then, once we've logged in, you come to the dashboard. Um, Michael is nice enough to pull up his screen here and um, so on the home screen, which is the main dashboard, we have a lot of nice features, just a snapshot of everything going on. So under Michael's name there, you can see that it shows his current balance. And uh, the, a great feature of this that I happened to stumble upon is that if you have a credit balance, it will say your current credit balance is, and then it puts it in parentheses for you. Um, you can click the pay now button, you can also see your last payment, um. And that will show, even if you haven't paid for a few months, it's still going to show that last payment there and it'll get the date of it. And then current bill also, um, that will always show what the most recent bill is, and if we did a leak adjustment for you or that kind of thing, that doesn't change. Uh, but the balance of the book would change. So, down below, you have the consumption, thank you, Michael. Uh, I really like this graph. There was a debate as to whether or not we should make this graph match what you see on your bill. The graph on your bill spreads out the two years and it starts with the oldest year on the left and the most recent months on the right. This one puts it side by side for you in the different colors. And um, I prefer this way personally, but I do also recognize the individuals see things differently. And so as for us to be able to provide it in two different fashions, I think is important. So if we go back up to the top and if we um, look on the right-hand side, there are a few options over there. You can pay your bill, enroll in auto pay, and schedule a payment. And so if we just hit on pay bills, there we go. It'll pull up the account that you have established on your, your portal and you can pay, he doesn't owe anything, but if he owes something on there, it would show. Did you not owe something on the front page? Now I'm confused. Oh, okay, I'm sorry. We weren't on the same page. There we go, it pre-fills for you, one hundred and six eighty-five. And then you can change that if you wanted to, um, and then if you continue to the next page, you can schedule that payment as well, but there's a button that's specifically for if you want to schedule something else. And then it asks for a credit card and a really great feature that we get to offer now, if Michael scrolls down a little bit, is e-check. So we now offer the ability to pay from your checking account online using e-check, which is a flat fee um, of a dollar ninety-five. So, and then you'll see over on the right-hand side there that it um, delineates that fee in there for them. Alright, um, if we go back to.
Can I ask a question about that?
Go ahead.
Thank, um, in regards to the e-check, so that's essentially a one-time ACH withdrawal as opposed to a recurring uh, auto payment?
Right. You can actually sign up for, in the auto pay section, you can sign up for auto pay from credit card or from, directly from your bank account. And so we do offer that feature on here. Some people like to control that and be able to add it and subtract it whenever they want to and they're willing to pay the fee. So it just gives the customer a little bit more flexibility that way, but if they want to avoid the fee, they should come to my team and set that up.
Okay, um, yeah, that was the question I had, um, because when we've moved to, you know, adding processing fees, that was feedback. I certainly received, I imagine my colleagues did as well, in regards to people um, that wanted options to avoid any extra processing fees, any processing fees, but there were people that did not want to set up for auto payment because they liked to be able to check their bill and make the payment manually. So my question is, if you set up auto payment, is there also a flat fee? Um, and if not, why is there now a flat fee to do a one-time ACH withdrawal? I'm just, maybe you're getting to it, so I apologize if I'm getting ahead of you, but I'm curious to know what options are available to people where they can avoid any sort of processing fees to pay to utilities?
They can mail in a payment.
Okay.
They can come to my office and pay by check or cash. And then they can set up the ACH, which we pull twenty days after their bill, so um, it's important for customers to understand that they can call us anytime and cancel that. If they look at their bill and it, it's higher than anticipated or that kind of thing, um, we would be able to, we have twenty days for that. And so those are the options. The reason why there's a flat fee is that we get, it's a charge that we incur. It's what the processor is charging and currently we're on that service fee model where we pass everything on to the customer.
Okay, so is, is there, is there not a fee for automatic payment withdrawal?
There is no fee if you set up automatic payment withdrawal directly from our team that we pull on the twentieth day from their bill. But if they sign up online to do an auto pay of any sort, whether it's through their checking account or with their debit or credit card, there is a fee involved. All online payments, whether it's auto pay or not, will have a fee associated with it.
Counselor, so.
Can I follow up? It's directly related, thank you. Um, why, why do we have to physically come in to set up that ACH automatic withdrawal? Because I'm lazy and would like to do that, but I haven't. Um, so why, why is there that distinction? Like, I mean, I've done that so many times for other bills online.
So. You don't have to come in physically. We've just implemented a DocuSign and so we can do it all through DocuSign.
Oh.
For you to be able to set it up, but it would need, it would require contacting our office.
Okay.
So that we could set that up and send it to you.
Oh, cool. That's helpful.
Any other questions about payments? Continue on.
If we go back to the main screen, um, I won't go into showing you what scheduled payments looks like. It's the same screen as bill pay. And enrolling an auto pay looks very similar to the pay bill screen as well. So if we move over to the left-hand side, we have manage accounts. And this is going to be really handy for landlords in um, regards to their properties. So on this screen, we only have one account right now, but right above the balance there, um, directly across from the word accounts, it has a button that you can click on to add additional accounts. So there's no limit, you can add as many accounts as you wish. You just need the account number and customer number to be able to add those accounts in there. And then you would be able to see, just like in this snapshot right here, it gives you the account number, the address, the last payment received and the current balance and when it's due. Okay, if we move down to the account detail, and actually if I just make one quick note here, um, on there, if you clicked on, if you had multiple accounts added to it and you were in the pay screen, you would see all of the accounts and you could say how much you're going to pay to each account. Or it pre-fills it for you and if you want to pay all of them, the full amount, you can just pay them in one click. So, under account detail, you can see what we have for a service address, mailing address. You are able to change your mailing address on here, which um, for safety reasons and um, privacy reasons, we do send, that sends an email to my team who then verifies before making the mailing address changes. And you'll be able to see your metered services on here for this particular account and non-metered services, which are typically going to be residential water is metered and then sewer and sanitation. Some people have additional sanitation and any different services as well down there. If you click on transition or transactions, this is. Where you can see your running total and so there's going to be, actually, there we go. You'll be able to see your bills and all the payments, um. You see an adjustment there, which is really nice for customers who might have a leak adjustment. We were trying to test out um, some features of this and um, Michael volunteered to be delinquent and then I made an adjustment on his bill for that. So that's why you see that adjustment. Um, I didn't think it was fair that when we're testing something that we make him pay a delinquent fee, so. Um, if you click on the bill, that's going to pull up your bill for you, you're going to be able to view the bill and speaking of bills, if they're signed up for um, emailing, they get an email as soon as we issue that bill. Right now, there's a delay because we're uploading it to another entity and then that entity did it to some configurations before they actually get it onto the website, so there's a a twenty-four to forty-eight hour delay in that. This one does it instantly, um, as soon as we issue that. Below transactions, we have consumption. We kind already went over the graph. Down below the graph is a table. So depending on how you like to look at your information, we have both options there. And then the last piece that we have is contact preferences. And this is where you would go, this is the screen it takes you from that first screen to sign up for e-billing. Um, and then also, if you want to receive uh, you're signed up for auto pay, you can sign up for auto pay reminders there.
Before we go on, I think we have a question about the managed accounts.
Um, so for a homeowner myself, this will be handy. For being a landlord, this is not going to be helpful for me. And so it's um, because I don't have all of my tenants' customer numbers, client IDs and this, that and the other. So, when I set up landlord account, like uh, what I do, say with like uh, Black Eyed Peas energy. I have a master account and then, so when I have landlord account, they're all under, I can pull up my master account under their website and then I've got all my properties there and then I can click into them. And so that I can kind of, and then I can pay their bill online or do whatever I'm needing to do from master account. This is not going to provide anything like that for landlords, correct? So we're still going to have to call and then go through the phone and then figure out if they're delinquent and how much and all that, right?
But you are capable of adding their accounts on to here and um, so.
But they set, set up the account, they then, so they're giving a customer number and account number. So they set that up. How do I, as a landlord, receive that information?
So, this is where it gets a little tricky because there are some um, privacy issues that we run into and based off of what was approved for, through ordinance, uh, landlords are able to obtain a delinquent notice in the event that the customer is delinquent. It was, that was what was approved in ordinance. So there's not a avenue unless um, the attorney's office can give us another option, I guess. Um, per ordinance, you get the delinquent notice in order to monitor your tenants if you choose to sign up for that. So providing.
So like right now, we just get just a vague, your bill is due, but it, it, that's all it says, is literally that. And if you have four hundred, basically, or your bill is due tomorrow, kind of a scenario via text message. Um, so if you have four or five hundred properties, you know, it's just like, well, which one? You know, and so that's kind of the, the struggle that we have with the automatic system right now, is that it.
So you're not getting delinquent notices for your tenants, an actual physical delinquent notice?
No.
Um, I will have my team reach out to you as a landlord. It's a new process. So in order to sign up for it, you have to initial on a brand-new, we have a new form for landlords. And um, I thought my team that addressed that, but I will talk to them about that, that reaching out to existing landlord agreements and getting those updated if they choose to have the delinquent notice. So you'll actually get a physical notice that says this location, the name of the account holder, it's going to give the delinquent dollar amount and um, when they have to pay it to avoid shop. That would be helpful. Thank you.
Continue.
I think that that was the last thing that I had, uh, we went to contact preferences, that was where e-billing was. Yes, that was the last thing that I had for you. Now it's open to additional questions.
Counselor Pollock.
Uh, thank you. This looks a lot more user-friendly and more, there's more access to information on here than I think what we had before, so I'm, I'm really happy with how this is turning out. What does it look like um, to, to get in the entry point to this portal on the the broader website? Where, where do you find that? What is the process to get from there into the portal?
So, currently on our website, and my plan is that we will um, add this link and encourage people to go to it. I, I worry a little bit that some people are already using the pay utilities now um, from our main website and then clicking here to pay your bill. We will be changing that link to go directly to the page that I started you on, um. But I, I do plan on having like, maybe a landing page before that that uh, says, we're transitioning to this, we highly encourage you, sign up for this. Um, if you are still utilizing the old system, here's the link to that, but we, this is going away on this stage. So um, we will change your link from taking you to the old portal to taking you to the new portal, right to the screen that I gave you.
Cool.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Oh, I, I do have one other thing. The really great thing is that the payments in this website happen immediately in our system. I'm super excited about that. So that's going to be really great for delinquents uh, when we're in a shut-off period for that week. Um, it's pretty phenomenal to see that payment come through immediately.
Nice.
Very good.
Mayor, just as a summation, a comment if I could, um, I, I really appreciate the improvements that have been made on this particular aspect of our service delivery, as well as with respect to what Transit is working on in regards to their service delivery as well. Um, all of this helps us to um, use data in a more productive way and in a way that should be much, much more helpful to the, to the consumer, to the citizen. And uh, from that standpoint, I, I thank you for that direction and the movement that we've made in uh, in this regard. I think it's just going to be tremendously helpful from here on out. Thank you.
It gives us, rather than, I think, and maybe, here are the facts and we can proceed forward. And particularly, I know we have gotten a lot of comments on the Transit system. Why did you take this stop off? Why did you do this? Why did you do that? And this basically says, yeah, we have one rider a month at that stop. We're not going to do it anymore. And that's exactly what we're looking for there. We're looking for that with our bill payers, with everything else and Councilor Gamroth with his data-driven, just ought to be just happy as a clam. Thank you. So I guess next on here is the agenda review. What do we have, Mr. City Manager?
Well, uh, Mr. Mayor, we uh, we have your grid document in front of you, hopefully, um. And uh, the only thing I'd really probably draw your attention to, pursuing through our very near horizon, are the work sessions that are coming up. Trying to capitalize on the summer work sessions as much as possible. In that, we're kind of in between budget sessions and so forth. Um, you can see a list of items that uh, that we are preparing for your review here coming up soon, particularly for the month of August. Um, and uh, furthermore, I, as a part of this discussion, I'd like to direct your attention to the future agenda items page and make sure we're not dropping the ball on items that you like to see happen or maybe wondering about their docking status and so forth. And that's really all that.
Very good. Any other comments about the agenda? Then we will try the council around the table. We'll start this time with Ms. Haskins.
Since the committee today, everything's looking good there. Sales tax looks to be down, but our investments are up, so no concerns on that end and. Yeah, no wait, there's a concert Wednesday, Gaslight. Look, yeah, who's uh, Corey Kent, country. And I think their subject gets filled, so I'm going to try to come there. That's why, like tomorrow, late tomorrow, Wednesday.
Counselor Gamroth.
I believe there was a Metro Task Force meeting last week and Council. What?
I'm on it.
Perfect. Counselor Pollock will give us an update on that. If she doesn't cover it, um, I believe we do have a new shelter manager starting uh, here in a week, so. Um, sorry if I stole your thunder, but I'm looking forward to uh, that person being in that role. Um, had a CH, Casper Housing Authority Board meeting last Thursday. They awarded contracts for work at Willard School. Um, and obviously we'll have a special meeting here shortly uh, to discuss that issue a little bit further. Wyam Association of Municipalities received nine different resumes for their new executive director. I believe I informed uh, Council that um, Dave Frazier, the former president, is no longer with the organization. So we got nine resumes, six from in-state, three from out. There's going to be a preliminary round of interviews with final interview scheduled for middle of August, so we should have a new um, executive director for Wyam here. You know, uh, hopefully within a month or so. And then uh, lastly, I wanted to make folks aware of uh, this Thursday from six to eight, the Casper College Foundation and Alumni Assi- uh, Association is having a fundraiser for their STAR program. And that aids students who have experienced foster care, homelessness and are first-generation college students, so uh, you know, those folks are obviously um, have a lot of risk factors, but they're taking those steps to kind of um, you know, build a better life for themselves and potentially break some of the cycles of poverty, abuse, homelessness, other things they might be grappling with. So uh, that's one small thing you might be able to do for um, folks that are trying to do the right thing and trying to improve their lives. Tickets are fifty bucks each. Uh, sounds like it's going to be awesome food, a Kahlua pig and pineapple fried rice and stuff. So you might consider attending that event this Thursday. That's all I got. Thanks.
Special favor?
I don't have much. Um, I, there's a homeless college meeting tomorrow, but I won't be able to attend, so.
Oh, thank you for that. I also won't be able to attend, so I would love for somebody.
We are rethinking our council obligations.
It's at noon.
I can go.
At Central County Council Center.
Yeah, which day?
Tomorrow.
Oh.
Yes.
There's one, there's one.
Yeah, they do provide lunch.
It's really, I mean, there's, it's a great meeting.
I'm available, hour, hour and a half.
Yeah.
You want to go, Ray?
If you're available, you can if you want. I think I'm open, I don't have.
It sounds like it's a pretty full agenda, so I would love for someone to be there to report back.
I can go.
Okay.
I'll plan on it. Yes, I can. Liz, no, because she sends a packet, no, there she goes.
She's still here.
I might have to leave this mid-july, but, but I'll be there to get the gist of it. Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks for bringing that up.
Yep. Um, that was actually it, from me.
Very good. Counselor Pollock.
Um, thank you. I have two updates for you. Um, first is for Metro Animal Task Force. Um, we got a few um, updates on some projects that um, you probably are all familiar with. It's um, had some funding approvals come through to this group, so um, we've got uh, after quite a while, we've gotten a contract to get the um, fence blocking path completed, so that's moving ahead. Um, that, uh, the shelter needs assessment um, that we have approved is going to be kicking off at the end of next month. Um, the exterior kennel that we approved some funding for uh, recently is going to be here um, is said to be installed at the end of October, but um, long time to get the kennel itself, but all of the preliminary work to get it placed um, with the the groundwork that was needed and the um, plumbing and that sort of thing is already done, so we'll be able to just um, get it, get it up there and get it going as soon as it arrives. Um, we have some openings up there in staff and a few jobs that are, I think, closing quite soon. Um, or maybe get off Friday. Um, so there's, there's some openings and a number of um, high-rings that will hopefully happen up there in the short term. And it's off in that one. And then LGBTQ advisory, um, dominantly talked about um, got a presentation coming up in October, so uh, to Council, so talked about what um, they would like to uh, cover uh, to update you all on. And then um, the municipal quality index with the Human Rights Campaign. to update you all on. And then the municipal equality index with the Human Rights Campaign. All of our submission to them is due in the next month. So not anticipating any major changes there kind of status quo, but we're just working through that process to make sure that they have the most up to date information from Casper. I think that is, I have a thing the coming week, so I don't have anything to report to you the next one as far as meetings go. So I think that's my lead.
Did I see you have positions opening or seats opened or?
Yeah, we do. We have, I think, two vacancies and I believe they just sent out the release that that application would be available. Thank you. Yeah.
Minister Buchs Committee.
For LGBTQ advisory.
Good. Counselor Ballack.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to, sorry, Brady left, but I just, Joe, I hope you'll pass on to them. My, the, I, I think, I was just looking at this, these payment options menu, and that's very impressive to have three options with fees and four options with no fee. And I was thinking, I was thinking about the time I used to spend writing out checks every month. I was like, what am I complaining about? I have a little fee for a credit card. But now I'm signed up for AC8, so I'm even happier. But anyway, please pass that on. I mean, just nice work on that goal thing. So the, Randy and I, Counselor Haskins, I'm sorry, and I are back on track to do our court liaison meetings again. I hope that's what the council wanted. We'll meet regularly, quite quarterly, I'm guessing. We haven't set that up yet. We have our first meeting scheduled for the end of August with the municipal court judges. And I think the judicial will join us as well. She usually does. And then Carter, I, I had signed up for the 29th for the police staffing, but I'm going to be out of town. So if anyone else could step in, it's, it's July 29th, or 10, 10 o'clock at the city manager's office. So I signed up for that and I'm sorry, I just have, I need to be out of town. So if anyone else could, is available. So and that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Is there, do we need somebody else to fill that spot?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, not necessarily. I think if there is an interest, obviously, you may probably.
I think there was one other person signed up by you.
I think you'll be there.
Yeah, I'll be there. I just didn't know that one too. So I'll be there. Counselor Jensen.
I have just a couple of things to go over. I wanted to let everybody know about a cool opportunity. I attended CFD this past weekend to take in the rodeo parade and also to support First Lady Gordon's Stop Out Hunger Initiative. And she has some collaborations that are going on with CFD, Alexis Drake, who's a designer, like a ladies designer, and then Montana Silver. And so I'm saying that if you head down there, anybody does head down there, check out the souvenir shops because she has those pieces. There's a bolo like I got right here, a scarf and t-shirts. So it's a whole initiative to, and those collaborations with those people. So go get your swag and feed her cause. Do you see what I did with that Hunger Initiative? Feed it. But the part of the proceeds from those purchases do go to the Hunger Initiative too. So if anybody's down there, get your swag and support her initiative and bring awareness because when you wear it, people are going to ask because they're really cool products. The other thing is the Rialto is opening this, or the first weekend of August, so the third and the fourth. So I know that they're putting out some free programs, but it's still ticketed. So if you want to take it, you have to go to the rialto.com, something like that. They have a whole list of different events and comedians and family fairs, princess tees, all kinds of fun things that are coming to the community. So support the Rialto if you get a chance. And then my last thing that I have is next week, Kyle, we're going to be caroling for Old Yellowstone District for Christmas in July. So we'll be out and about on the 31st from seven to nine. He's like my prom mom. Seven to nine downtown, Old Yellowstone District. So we're starting at David Street Station and maybe like Wilbur Way back around or something. So Christmas in July, wear your Santa suits or shorts, Hawaiian shirts, I don't know, tee hee drinks. Singing Christmas carols, celebrating. So that's all I got.
Was in addition to what you said, if they're interested in the bling that you're talking about, the hunger, they can go to cfdrodeo.com and then go to merchandise and you can buy those things online. You don't even have to go to, don't even have to go there.
There you go. I didn't know if they had them online. They are.
Well, I haven't looked at those specifically, but I know you can get the t-shirts, the belt buckles, the.
Well, you can get regular CFD swag on there. I'm not sure about her Hunger Initiative stuff exactly.
Oh, okay.
Promoted to go to a specific shoot 10, Murgantil, which is inside of the Old West Museum. So especially for the bolo. So I'm not sure if they're telling you. And I ordered the scarf off of Alexis Drake's email or website directly. Oh, I'm not sure.
Okay. Counselor Pacheco.
We'll get the homeless. At noon. That's all I've got.
Okay.
Nice for her.
I had a quarterly luncheon with the municipal judges on Friday. Things are going pretty good over there. And the Judge Gillespie, she's starting to feel like she's got her feet underneath her and feeling a lot more confident with how things are running. Attended Visit Casper meeting today, then the finance committee meeting today. And so Visit Casper, they just finally kind of just finished off their budgeting. They, for the lodging tax, they made $2.3 million for the year, which is pretty darn good. So most of that does come back into the county. And so then the only other thing that I just want to put out there is there are a lot of accidents with vehicles and motorcycles. And I am just really urging the public to really just pay attention to people on motorcycles, pedestrians. So just pay attention, slow down, pay attention. That's all.
Very good. Well, along those lines, let's see. Had a meeting last week at noon with you. Mayor Commissioners Breakfast Thursday morning, spent most of the day last Thursday over at the Regulatory Reduction Committee meeting. And I thought it a bit ironic that it's supposed to be regulatory reduction, but they were proposing about four different new bills. So I thought that was a bit of an oxymoron. But anyhow, I spent most of the day there. Then also the lunch with the judges. The finance meeting today, coming up this next week. I will be at 8:15 at the police headquarters for the soaring in. And then I think we have another meeting at 10:00. At 3:45 at Highland Park Church is the deployment ceremony for the National Guard, which is on Tuesday, the 30th. And I haven't even looked at next month yet. But anyhow, that's where we're going. So do you have anything else to add that we need to be looking at, Mr. City Manager?
I do not, Your Honor. Thank you.
Very good. Yes, there is no meeting next week. Thank you.
Unless you want to change that.
No.
I'd probably like to meet next.
Well, you're not mayor.
No, 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 there will not be another meeting.
Extra work yet.
I've got, I already got a commitment for next Thursday, or next Tuesday.
Pardon me, you and I can be here.
Yeah, you two can go to the meeting. I'm going to the National Guard. Before we begin this evening, I would like to remind everyone to silence their, this is special meeting. Before we begin this evening, I would like to remind everyone to silence their cell phones. Council meetings are live streamed on the City YouTube channel. And I've called the July 23rd, 2024 Special Council Meeting to order. All councilors are present. Yeah. Now please join me in the pledge allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please read the consent resolutions and follow me.
Extending and placing Resolution Number 22-174 and authorizing a revised Community Development Block Grant Agreement between Wyoming Community Development Authority and the City of Casper to assist in funding renovations for the Willard Invision.
Not in here, but I guess I need a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Are there any amendments? Any discussion? Any abstentions or nay votes? All voting aye?
Aye.
Please record the vote.
All councilors standing aye in motion.
The Chair would enter, would now entertain a motion to adjourn the special meeting.
Second.
Any abstentions or nay votes? All voting aye?
Aye.
Please record the vote.
All councilors.
Yes, the meeting is adjourned.
Surprise.
Thanks, everybody. You bet.